K L T V Soundtrack, K L T V Soundtrack. K L T V Soundtrack, K L T V Soundtrack. K L T V Soundtrack, K L T V Soundtrack.
Yes, Dean.
Okay.
Okay. We're, uh, yeah. Welcome to the Tuesday meeting of the B O C C. We have Chaplain Russ with us today going to lead us off with invocation.
Yeah, hey, Lord, we just thank you and pray you and love you so much for everything you're doing in all of our lives, Lord, for taking all of our burdens and, and, and things that got heavy on our minds and heavy on our, on our hearts, Lord. And thank you for all the things in our family you heal, all the things in our communities that you heal, and all the things in our country and world that you heal, Lord, we give you praise. And Lord, I just, I just pray that you honor everybody in the room with the needs they have, Lord, specifically reach out and touch them for anything that is holding them in bodies from moving forward and doing great things for you, Lord. And we just ask this of Jesus, my name is again. Pledge allegiance.
Oh, you're gonna lead us in the pledge too?
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before I yield back to the commissioner here, you have a birthday, gentlemen, as yesterday, let's sing, Steve, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, he was awful quiet, he was awful quiet about it. Somebody come and ratted him out, I see. Okay. Uh, the entertainment motion for the minutes.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the minutes of July fourteenth through sixteenth.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Do we have any comments, questions on them? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I'll run through consent agenda. It should be a pretty light day today, I think. We have two call, call for hearings, and they're both August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. First one's at nine forty-five, and it's a call for hearing to amend Cal- Calhoun County Code eleven dash oh four. This is a traffic code, um, to address posting of signings for restrictions on stopping, standing, and parking. Uh, I, I, I don't see them here, but if I remember right from yesterday, the fines and stuff used to be set by the state of Washington, and now that's back to the, the county set those fines. So that's what this is about, is ba- basically set, setting the fines for these violations. Am I pretty clo- close on that, Susan?
Sorry, I missed some of that while I was switching over. Yes, the state used to set the fines, and then they switched it over to counties. And so we're getting this set up so that we can set the fines.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Uh, the second call for hearing is for a comprehensive plan map amendment for fifty-one and a half acres. It's actually ten properties off of Kildere Road in Cas Rock. It's east of Cas Rock. As you start heading up the hill, it dies off to the west. It sits above the river. It actually kind of sits above, I think, a lot of county property down in there. So that hearing, and basically what that hearing is about, it'll look to changing the plan from, uh, in simple terms, from five acre minimums to two acres. And that's also set for, as I mentioned, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, and I'll be at ten o'clock in this room. Call for bids. We have a call for bids for one-time purchase of high density, density, uh, pipe. I tried that word once before and messed it, so stay away from it. They're looking at seventy-three hundred linear feet in its pipe we use up at the landfill. Uh, agreements, contracts, bid awards, contract with Dirt and Aggregate, Inc., for the two thousand twenty-five coun- countywide guard rail project. This is new guard rail. We've had, um, you've seen stuff in for re- repairing existing guard rail. This is new guard rail. Total amount is two ninety-eight, nine ninety-nine, and the majority of it is up Kalama River Road. Uh, number five, it's a right-of-way easement with Calhoun's Public Utilities District for the Public Facilities District Gateway Project. Over at the fairgrounds, you know, one of the projects is to move the entrance, uh, You know, one of the projects is to move the entrance, uh, from its current location to, uh, fronting Fifth Avenue, because at some point in time it'll be a direct shot into there. And there is a power pole that has to be moved, not far, what'd they say, a couple of feet?
Two feet.
Two feet. And, uh, so, and we discovered when that had to happen, uh, I think maybe the P U D discovered or we discovered, we didn't have an easement to allow that to happen. So that's what this is for, is to allow them to move that pole. Then, uh, six, we have equipment purchase with Dell marking under, this is for desktop laptops and fifty ruggedized laptops. Those are basically what their, our sheriff's department uses. This is normal replacement periods. Uh, it's money we set aside. It's not any new expenses. Money we set aside for these replacements, so that's going on. Vouchers. We have a drainage improvement district, number one, uh, May twenty, twenty-five voucher, an amount of one thousand three hundred thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. And then regular vouchers for the county, total two million, two thirty-one, two forty-seven, and twenty-seven cents. We have, as you noted, we have Department Ecology in here today at ten, and we have a mental health workshop in here today at eleven.
Wait for a motion to approve.
Yeah, yeah.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent agenda. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, call for a vote. Those in favor? Okay. Couple news releases that I'll just, uh, that have gone out, that I'll speak about today, special three-day filing period for City of Cas Rock. City of Cas Rock has a vacancy on their, their council. Council position number three has been vacated. So a file will be open beginning Monday, August eleventh, at eight a.m. through Wednesday, August thirteenth, at five p.m. at the Calhoun County Elections. So you can, uh, you can do that online. That's an online option, or that's twenty-four seven. Or for in-person, it would be Monday, August eleventh through Wednesday, August thirteenth, eight a.m. to five p.m. at the actual election office. And this is a position for City of Cas Rock, Council Position Number Three. The other news release I saw is, uh, Calhoun County Attorney's Office is advising the public of an upcoming increase to marriage license fees. On July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, the cost will go from seventy-two dollars to a hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's due to a hundred-dollar surcharge imposed by House Bill fourteen ninety-eight. Our folks in Olympia haven't seen a fee that they don't love. Uh, upcoming stuff, I already talked about the workshops today. Next Tuesday is Board of Health. Other than that, there's only a couple here, so I don't know if you have anything you want to talk about? Okay. Anything I don't, we won't adjourn this because we have people coming in, in at ten, but we can certainly recess it till ten. Okay? We good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so recess till ten when Department Ecology comes in.
Here I did so good keeping my birthday quiet yesterday, and then somebody goes and spoils it the next day.
Okay, we'll come out of recess. We're at our 10 o'clock hour. We have, well, we don't have Bobic today. He's not gonna be in. He's got some other commitments for ecology. But we have Shawna here and, I don't know, any, last time we met was about three months ago. Did we leave anything on the table we wanted to recover? Not that I can think of. I think, I know ecology had a new director, so I was gonna ask him how that was going, but he's not here to.
Do you want me to try and get Casey here at a future? We can always ask.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we mentioned, yeah, he's definitely a different kind of director. I had mentioned he's not a lawyer, so he takes a little bit different of an approach. He's gone out to all the regions and field offices to, you know, get out and talk to people. He speaks at business meetings and, you know, just really trying to make sure that we're, you know, doing the best job we can of kind of balancing like our regulatory responsibilities, you know, cleaning the environment, but also working with people where we can.
Yeah. So I think that's a, I actually think that's probably kind of a good, good change. Seems to be more open and more communicate. However you say that, yeah, communicate better. Let's put it that way.
Yeah.
So I think what we'll do, because I don't know if the audience has any questions, but we might just turn over and I know you had some stuff you wanted to talk about. You brought some experts today. And Dave. So we'll just turn that over and I'm sure that'll, we have 60 minutes if we need it. And if it spurs some questions, they'll certainly try and answer them for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, appreciate the opportunity to, I wasn't exactly sure how it would fit in, but when, back when we were still like. Sure, yeah. Well, and actually, do we want to start with any public questions before we go into?
Is there anything burning that you wanna, no rough the bat? How about we just dive into it and then if that spurs some questions, they, they're free to come up and ask. Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. So originally when we were scheduled for the 29th, Bobec was not going to be able to make that date. And so that's when I had the idea to maybe talk more about the, you know, what's going on in the Toodle and the Cowlets. The collaborative is, is shifting facilitation from Ruckus House to the Council of Government, so that I think there's going to be some, some changes there. And, you know, basically give you all an opportunity to ask questions from folks who are doing work in Cowlets County. And anyway, so then we switched it to the 22nd. He was gonna be here until just last week with some of the things coming up. It just, he had to stay on Lacey and focus on that stuff. So it worked out well. And so who we have here is just in order here, Alisa Holt, the Executive Director, co-director of Mountain St. Helens Institute. And she, I'll let her explain what they do. And then Morgan from Lower Columbia Fish Enhancement Group, which I have some, some previous connections to, and she's doing a great job as director there. And then I'm like blanking on everybody's names. Elaine Placido, it must be the camera, with the Executive Director of Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership. And so by way of introduction, they're all either doing work in Cowlets County of a different nature. You know, some more restoration focused, but with economic benefits, with sediment management benefits, education and recreation work. And then the Estuary Partnership, their projects are, they, they work in a huge area. Elaine will talk about that. But there's a lot of potential things that they could do. And she'll talk about some examples of work that they've done with like community engagement. And so all organizations that I really respect and appreciate the work that, that they're doing. So with that, I think we'll kick it off. We were gonna start with, with Morgan. Do you want her here or up, up there?
Pick one.
Either one is fine.
Come sit next to me.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and I do have some documents for you guys, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice. So what I just distributed is a little breakdown of our work in Cowlets County over the last five years and looking forward a little bit, kind of showing the economic impact of our work. And speaking towards the collaborative, while the collaborative really. Uh, while the collaborative really hasn't, um, directly impacted our projects, it's enabled, uh, the cooperation, the work together, the consensus billing, um, to facilitate the work, doing work in a reach like the Toodle River. It's incredibly complex jurisdictionally, the amount of agencies, you know, we're here with ecology, but we have regulatory agencies from WTFW, Army Corps of Engineers, US Fish, you name it. Um, tribal partners that we have to collaborate with before we do any work there and having a space that we can consistently regularly meet with these folks, ask questions, get comments on what they think of our projects, what we're proposing. It's really invaluable to us. We don't have that elsewhere. We have to track down agency, uh, folks to try to participate, you know, with our work regularly. So to have a space that I can have on my calendar being like, okay, I'm gonna see that person then, and I can ask them that, you know, burning question that I need to ask them about our, you know, project. Or I know a permit's hanging, or I have a question on the SRS that seemed not quite right when I read their, you know, environmental impact statement. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna see that, you know, agency official there and I can ask them that burning question, um, rather than send an email and have to get lost in the ether. So for my local sponsor who's trying to get work done and I, what I distributed hopefully shows a little bit of the, you know, significance of the work we're doing in Cowlets. Um, you know, it's really invaluable to us and we really, uh, appreciate the cog taking on the collaborative and, and want it to succeed and want it to grow. Um, yeah. I think that's everything. If you guys have any questions on what I distributed, happy to answer those otherwise.
Do you wanna highlight some of the economic or sediment management things of?
Sure.
So they, and I'll just, uh, for some context, they're working in the upper watershed, so the North Fork Toodle and the South Fork Toodle and not, not the, you know, like LT one and the Cowlets at this point. Um, but, uh, and there's a lot of discussion in the collaborative and beyond that and whether it's USGS, you know, some of the, um, academics who are involved about the ability to control sediment and keep it up there in the upper watershed. Uh, because of this kind of work, there's a like really strong connection between habitat restoration work, putting wood in the water, um, in the river, stabilizing that channel and retaining the sediment up there. So she's knowledgeable about that.
So, yeah, the, the, the way Bryce's projects work, uh, our project manager up there is he.
Cowlets County native, by the way.
Yeah.
He's from, uh, Rose, Rose Valley area.
Yeah, he's, he's moved watersheds from the, uh, Coweyman to the Toodle. Uh, uh, but, um, his projects, uh, add roughness to the Lahar up there. Cause right now without plants establishing on that Lahar and stabilizing it, the river's just kind of lawnmowing its way back and forth and pushing that sediment out. Uh, with no, no, uh, structures to fix it and hold it in place and allow trees to grow along the banks and create that braided channel that, uh, slows the water down and, uh, settles the sediment out up there. So our projects retain that sediment up there. I have a little breakdown of the cost on the second page there of our project compared to dredging. So, uh, our projects for cubic yard of sediment cost about two dollars fifty. Uh, dredging costs about twelve dollars. So we're dealing with the problem at the source with these projects sediment wise. Obviously, we're a fish group. We're providing fish habitat. That's the focus of the project, but this is a lovely co-benefit that we're happy to celebrate. And, um, yeah, so, uh, you know, it's, it's economically, you know, more, uh, efficient to deal with the project, problem up there. And also it has all these great co-benefits. Um, and if you see on the other side, it's a long phased project that we have, you know, been gearing up for, for a while. We're in probably the biggest phase we've done this year, uh, in the upper South Fork. Um, but we'll be doing work up there every year for the next five years on this scale, hopefully. Knock on wood. Um, and expending these types of funding up there every year, hiring loggers, hiring local contractors or contractors out of Cowlets or, or loggers are out of Cowlets. Um, and I will need the collaborative or it will be very, very helpful to have the collaborative as a place to help coordinate these things.
Yeah, and I would add that they, LCFG is one of the pioneers in using native wood, so local wood wherever they can that they're gonna put in the river instead of paying for transportation, whether they buy it from DNR or I think up to this point, Weyerhauser hasn't given you wood, have they?
Um, they have a kind of a blanket no on us. Um, but we were able to buy a timber sale wholesale from DNR this year. Um, and that's not reflected on this actually economic impact state, because this is something I put together as a, as a projection, but if we had a true like economic input, uh, um, assessment of our work, it would have that DNR sale and, uh, you know, proceeds of that go to the Cowlets County, uh, Rural Education Fund, uh, I believe. I'm not an expert on that. So that's another aspect how it directly does it. And we're working with DNR to plan out more purchases in the future, also tall, tall corn industry, which is another, um, a landowner up there, we're working with them to try to buy wood from them. Um, and yeah, it's a, it's a really good benefit from that to be able to buy the wood in the watershed saves, saves us tons of money and also allows us to, you know, spend those funds in Cowlets County.
With your, your structures, I know th- this, they have the settlement retention dam up there. How much are you able to keep from coming down? Uh, I would assume that it's probably, you, you kind of need both. I can't imagine you can hold as much as the retention structure can.
Yeah, well, this works on the South Fork that we're doing right now.
Okay.
So, you know, we're, we're holding thousands, uh, maybe even tens of thousands of cubic yards.
Okay.
The, the sediment retention structure is hundreds of thousands. The North Fork is significantly bigger and has way more sediment movement in there. That said, we have, that is our plan. We need to, we want to start working up above the SRS and wanna start doing, uh, this type of nature-based restoration activity above the SRS. Um, WTFW did, uh, a similar thing on their property up there several years ago and showed the potential is huge for, uh, retaining sediment with these structures. They, it was just a small little pilot that they did where they tried to, uh, put in some structures along the bank, along the Elk Reserve up there they have. And it protect that bank, secured that, allowed the riparian to grow in there and the sediment that was behind those structures that was eroding down to the SRS stabilized and has been there for the last, uh, several years. So, um, there's definitely a huge benefit to the work up there and we would, we'd love to do it. We just, we have our, our hands full with the South Fork.
Well, we're, we're like forty-five years since the mountain erupted. Do you imagine that what you're doing is gonna be a hundred percent effective at stopping the sediment from wa- going down river?
Well, nothing's a hundred percent effective.
Well, before the mountain erupted, we didn't have tons of sediment coming down that river.
Yeah.
So now we're talking after the eruption. Do you imagine you're gonna be as efficient as it was before the eruption?
I think what we'll hopefully be successful with, uh, is stopping the negative feedback loop of the river constantly putting, uh, sediment down. I don't know what the rate will be, but if we can stop that lawnmower effect where it's just moving valley wall to valley wall and, and pushing sediment and not allowing that riparian to grow in the Lahar, um, we can definitely reduce it.
Well, I envision in my mind, if you do twelve dollars a cubic yard and you do dredging, once it's out of the river, it's gone. Right now, if you're spending two dollars and fifty cents a cubic yard and next year that cubic yard that you didn't stop is quarter mile downstream, then you're gonna do another two dollars and fifty cents cubic yard trying to stop it and it's gonna keep moving downstream. You're not gonna stop it and ultimately you're gonna spend a hell of a lot more than twelve dollars a cubic yard. And if you look at the effect right now of the Cowlets River where it's sitting, it seems like we have no problem dredging the Columbia River. Obviously, you can't stop that big revenue source. The Cowlets used to be and it's still considered to be a navigable river, but you can't navigate up, up or down that river. They used to run steamships up and down that river. They used to run log down, log rafts down that river. Not anymore. Most of the time, this time of year, you can just about walk from here to Castle Rock with no problem, maybe get your ankles wet.
And I would clarify that, um, the work that they do in the, the upper watershed is just part of the full picture. It's certainly not saying that dredging isn't one part of, of the solution. Um, you know, we saw the Cowlets River and that bar forming at the site visit last week. Um, and, uh, there really has to be a toolbox for all of this, right? And a lot of options. But this is one that, um, does help slow down that, the source of it, um, which, you know, is gonna make things easier, uh, downstream. So that's really the, the key point.
Yeah.
So I get, I'd like to ask you, and the numbers you're showing here in the five years you've spent on, I guess, salmon recovery?
Yeah, that, that's the primary focus of all these projects are habitat restoration.
So how many more salmon are in the river today than there was five years ago?
For the South Fork, uh, we're showing an increase in viability for Chinook and, and Steelhead.
An increase of one or an increase of what?
I don't have the, the specific numbers, but, uh, they moved from a, a high risk to a medium risk in the recovery board's assessment in the South Fork. Our goal is to, you know, continue that up, um, and provide the, our, you know, we're just doing habitat. We're not, um, counting fish. We're not WTFW, um, but we're, our goal is to provide the habitat to enable them to eventually, uh, show a greater level of viability.
And it, it's tricky because I've seen where Bryce, project manager, has done projects. They put wood in and the fish respond. I mean, you go back, you know, in, in the spring and there's just tons of juveniles in there. And so you see it anecdotally, but the tricky thing with salmon, of course, is then they leave the watershed, go out to the ocean and they've gotta go down to Columbia and all the threats there. And so it's, it's more than just the, the tributary restoration that, that impacts them. Um, but, you know, it's, it's doing something. It's just salmon.
We, we call it the four Hs, um, and we're one of the four Hs, which is habitat. And, and that is our, you know, we're kind of late, laser focused on that and try not to get into the politics and everything else, knowing that we, if we build a, or the other stuff outside of our base and outside of our control, um, knowing that if we build a good home for them, um, we can do the best we can.
Ron, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I, I kind of look at what is the big picture here is that it's the whole stream effect. We've actually been working at this for forty years in one way or another. And you have to have some metrics to know if you're succeeding in any of this science and planting things in there. So when you say we are better, we're better, we're, we've been working for better for forty years, but we're not really much better. So I looked for metrics. One is that, uh, the, the river, okay? So you put the stuff in like we're saying. So then we get the floods, that whether it's the five year, ten year, fifty year or whatever. And I presume, I hope you're back looking at these every little places because the logs and the things that you put in wash out and get moved down the river, et cetera, as everything moves down river. So what is the master plan? For instance, I heard that the salmon are getting at risk in the river because the temperature is already up in the Columbia River. Okay, so every little finger in this pie needs to be working toward a similar objective. And if the birds at the mouth of the Columbia or the seals here eat all of our progress up, then we're, it's kind of, uh, spitting in wind. So you've gotta have a collaborative with the fish and wildlife, the, the Native Americans and everybody else and be able to market some sort of progress in now, not terms, not just saying I'm better today than I was yesterday. How better, better? And is it gonna take another forty years, a hundred years to get to a certain point? And that exceeds all of our, our time. So I'm just, what is your master plan, uh, in your area? What are you really trying to do?
Well, I mean, we're really trying to restore, speaking of just the South Fork Toodle, restore the natural processes that were disrupted by the eruption and salvage logging up there so that we can, um, increase the spawning and rearing habitat in the upper reaches where there's cold water. Um, and provide the best opportunity for the fish that do spawn up there while they're leaving.
And they're just a non-governmental organization, so they work under, um, the lead entity for salmon recovery in Southwest Washington is the Lower Columbia, um, Fish Recovery Board, which we could bring them sometime if you ever, well, he's on the, he's on the board, Steve is, so, um, but, uh, but they're the ones that really are more connected to like WTFW's metrics, NOAA's metrics at the federal level, fish, fisheries. Um, so it's, it's being tracked and monitored. Um, they, they do have metrics, uh, for sure. But they're just the habitat side of it.
To bring that back to the collaborative, that's why that's so important. We, you know, we're a small staff. We don't have the capabilities to track all these out of watershed, uh, things that affect the fish up there. Having a place that we can meet and, and talk with the folks who are tasked with that to, I can ask the question of, so what numbers of fish are we talking about now? Where are we moving on this? Is our work, you know, uh, moving the needle, um, on recovery and have those conversations is so important. Cause otherwise we're doing our work, you know, in, in, uh, in a silo and not being able to talk with our, our cooperators in the region.
Your name, it's Megan, right?
Morgan.
Morgan. I appreciate you coming and being willing to take these questions. Um, in this presentation that you gave us here, I understand that your fish restoration habitat, right? Uh, you don't actually release fish into the rivers and that kind of thing. Um, but one of, one of the issues that I have, uh, being on the fish recovery board and, and learning and understanding a little bit more about how that works is if we look at your appendix A and all these restoration projects and you look at the price tags that are, you know, over here, we're twenty-one million dollars is what has been put into fish restoration. And, um, when you look at the numbers of fish that have been, uh, increased or decreased due to different variables in the tributaries and the mainstem Columbia and the ocean, that type of stuff. Um, I, I really have to ask myself, at what point do we just say that a lot of this stuff is existing solely to exist? And what I mean by that is, uh, at one of the collaborative meetings, I believe it was the first day, uh, the gentleman that was talking about fish, he made the comment that the salmon weren't recovering fast enough for him and for his organization and for his group. So, you know, one of the things that, that is a, a very big political agenda is, you know, uh, the, the, the letting mother nature do its thing, you know, no hunting, no logging, no leave nature alone type of a thing, which I think is, is a fallacy. We as human beings are involved in nature and we're here to, to be stewards over it. But when you look at these price tags, like, you know, the, the Delometer Creek Culvert, two hundred and eight thousand, uh, the Toodle reaches A, B, and C restoration, five million, the restoration of Brownell, two million. We're, we're, we're spending money. We're, we're putting this on the taxpayers. It, it's a burden to the taxpayer. And this culvert, okay, one, I, I specifically asked about the Delometer Culvert and I was told, oh, it'll last for, you will have to replace it for, I don't know, a hundred and fifty years or whatever the answer was. And my question is, why don't we just, because it's a fish passage culvert, why don't we just replace it with a regular culvert? If we have to replace it ten times over the next a hundred years, that's fine. Um, because science changes, it's fluid. Um, over the last forty years, the, the attempts and the things that we're, we're doing right now and the science that we're using is not the same science that we used when we started, right? So that has, has morphed and changed. Um, and, you know, I, I look at, for, for example, the, uh, the, the tribe has, uh, a river, the Quinault River. Um, you can go look at that river and they don't have a lot of the stuff that's on this page right here. Um, what they have is they have a, a brood stock hatchery program that they. they've stocked that river to the gills and they have huge steelhead returns, large fish. Um, it's not uncommon to catch two or three over 15 pounds in a trip. And when I asked about that, the question to me, I said, why don't we implement the same strategy that the tribe is using on their rivers, on our rivers? And the response was because they go by a different set of rules. So when I hear that, coming from somebody who is involved in that, like, my, I, I have to look at this stuff and question, to what degree are we just, our organization just popping up and asking for money to justify their existence to say, oh, this is the contribution that we're making. And, and the role that we have a, as, as commissioners and local government is to look at this and say, is this really making a difference? Is this $21 million really making the difference that we want it to make? And I think that's, that's, uh, to Ron's question is, is there a metrics that we're using to determine that this is actually working? Because you can drive up and down the Coloma, up and down the river, uh, Lewis River, up and down the Coweenan. And I don't really know that we have changed those rivers very much. The only thing that has changed is the, the output on the hatcheries that, that are being, the number of fish that are being released. Um, hatcheries are closing down and, and so I, I really, and, and I, I appreciate people like you guys that are doing the job that you do, wanting to make a difference. I really do. But when I look at the whole picture as a whole, when I look at the, the collaborative itself, I, I gotta, I, I just have to think, there's a part of me that says, there's a lot of these organizations that are, that are here to justify their existence when they ask for money. And I don't know that the taxpayers are really seeing a net, a net result because how many programs would we say that when we would start 40 years ago and we really haven't gotten any better 45 years later? And who knows how many hundreds of millions of dollars and put, put in over that time period that we would continue that program? And so, you know, I, I, I do appreciate your efforts. It's just one, you know, like I said, as I look at this, $21 million, did we really make a huge diff, did we make a difference? That, that's the question that I would ask. And that's the question I'm asking you. Can you, can you really point to areas where these programs have made a difference? In the, in, whether in the environment, the ecosystem, because I've read a lot of articles and the one thing that they all point to, and you have it in yours right here, and that is the economic impact. The, it's always, it always goes back to the economic impact and it's not about the fish. It's not about the, the river flooding. It's not about the, the, the bank going away. It always takes back to this, the economic driver, and that's, that's the selling point. And that's my problem. I, I want to talk about the fish. I want to talk about the fact that if the sediment retention dam goes, we're underwater. You know what I mean? Those are the, the priorities that I want to talk about. Not necessarily economic impact and job creation and local spending and all that kind of stuff. Does that make, did I understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, definitely. And, and I think that, you know, I, I, I wrote this specifically just looking at, uh, economics, not, not fish focused. Um, and, you know, I could have easily done a different report focusing on the fish, getting into the details on, on our target issues on different reaches.
It's, it's when I read all, you know, the, the article on one of the rivers in Bellevue, talking about the stock by salmon in there, it goes right back to the economic impact and the jobs creation and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we, I mean, we just hear that feedback, a lot of, you know, spending all this money, what is the economic impact of it? And how does this affect, you know, local economy? So that's what I tried to get at here. I think, uh, to your question about the fish, the, the thing, the reason I, I do this work and the reason I find it meaningful, um, just personally is I know if we weren't doing this, we're not going after a stationary target. And we would be seeing declines, whereas we're stable in most of our watersheds in the lower Columbia because of this work. Um, we're seeing some declines, obviously, but, you know, if we weren't doing this, we'd be seeing declines everywhere. So we're preventing extinction a lot of the times, more so than achieving recovery.
So, so my question to that would be oftentimes when I talk to, when you read the fish and game, the WDFW output on salmon and why the salmon returns are poor, it's never because of habitat. It's never because there's few, there's not any restoration. They always, the go-to is ocean conditions. That's, that's, that's the one that, that's the go-to. And if ocean, ocean conditions are the variable that we can't control really, and we're spending $21 million on this kind of stuff here, maybe we should be looking at ocean conditions as, as to what the problem with the return on the fish is. And instead of closing hatcheries, maybe we should look at opening more hatcheries to, to, you know, to continue the, the, the hatchery program so the, the fish, because when you, when you release hatchery into the, hatchery fish into the, into the river, they come back and spawn. Those same fish do come back and spawn. So when I look at that, if, if what we're saying that the reason that the fish returns are poor are the ocean conditions, not the fact that we don't have enough wood in the river or the, the, none of that stuff, that it always goes back to the ocean conditions. I think we should spend $21 million on figuring out what it is in the ocean that's causing the problem and see if we can work that a, as a different angle. Because to this point, like you said, you're, we're, we're to the point where if you don't do what you're doing, they're going to go extinct. Then that means we've done something wrong for a very long time, if we're to that point. You understand what I mean?
This is where I really wish Steve Manlow were here.
Yeah, yeah.
Director of, he, he would have better answers because he knows the, the data for sure. It, and it's, it is, the ocean really is important. And I sometimes feel like, I agree with you. Sometimes I feel like we're not doing enough there, but there is, there is work being done, trying to understand. Um, I mean, we know some of the problems in the ocean. Um, but I feel like, uh, you, you raise really good points, um, about, you know, having like clear metrics. And I think in conservation, we don't always, because we're, you know, we're sort of like people who work from the heart. Not that it's not science-based, but like this is important to us. And, um, and we just think sort of inherently it's valuable, right, to spend this money. But other people have different perspectives, like completely recognize that and, um, bring different values. The hatchery versus wild thing is, uh, that's a pretty important schism in like fisheries, you know, salmon recovery. Um, and the tribes, they, most of them are, are still very pro hatchery because that's their livelihood. Um, and, and we have to respect that, you know? Um, so you, I mean, you raise good points.
Yeah, the, the work laid out here does nothing to prevent other work. It's, it's, it's one piece in the puzzle.
No, I, I get that, but.
And it benefits.
We're probably spending a lot more than $21 million on the ocean anyway. Somebody, somebody else is getting a lot more money.
My point to the economic impact though, is a lot of this is driven by taxpayer dollars.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's government agencies getting taxpayer dollars to do this. If we spent $21 million and the rivers were full of salmon, you would, there would be no complaints from fishermen. The hotels would be booked during the hope, the fishing season. All the sporting goods stores would be, the shelves would be empty. Licenses, boat, all, that, that is an economic driver. That makes an economic impact. I don't, it's not an economic impact if we're taking taxpayer dollars to fund these programs. Does that make sense? We're not adding any economic.
Well, it just moves from like federal or state to some local benefits, but the, the value of, of a booming sport fishing economy is certainly.
I mean, I think that's captured with the, uh, 2.2 multiplier here for economic output is included in sports fishing and recreational activities that increase associated with this work. And yeah, uh, to what, uh, Shauna said, this is, you know, state and federal funds, a lot of federal funds being pulled into this region. We're paying county tax on a lot of our, uh, you know, purchases and sales. So we, you know, we're, we're bringing, I, I think we're bringing money that would not be in Calitz County, otherwise into Calitz County. Um, I've, you know, been kind of proud of that. So I think, I think it's a net benefit for Calitz County, uh, from a tax standpoint.
Do we want to move to our other?
Yeah, I don't want to hog all the time. I really appreciate the questions. They're really, really good questions.
Be willing to answer them and, and be here for us. I, I really am grateful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Morgan.
Right. So if I can ask another one then, is that, I, I color, I'm an engineer and I clearly understand working from the heart.
I, I'm not surprised you're an engineer. You asked us.
But at the same time, I've got to have me and other people working on things that you show some sort of success, that you can measure success and, and, and feel good about having success. Otherwise you burn out. So let me, when we talk about millions of dollars, 10 million here, 5 million there, 20 million there. I know how you can open up 150 miles of main river and all the tributaries by putting fish ladders on Chief Joseph Dam and on Grand Cooley Dam. You open up one whale of a lot of area, but that's where you guys got to push the bullet up the road and say, where is the best bet in Washington state? And not just, I'm not belittling pushing some sediment around, but we have the opportunity of doing some things that we can't get people to decide to spend the money to do it. Other than maybe the Colville Indian Reservation has more clout than all of us put together. But anyway, that's where we need your help and also directing and help the directors know where to direct us in the right direction. And that goes up the chain. All of us, whether we're in engineering or whatever, have to be willing to push up the chain and say, are there better ways for me and others to be putting our time in? And I, I look at Steve on the fish board to help ask those questions too. So thank you.
Morgan, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll bring up Elaine Placido, the executive director of Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership. I think we'll spend less time talking about fish, I believe, but I'll see. I don't know.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
This seat feels oddly familiar. I've prepared some remarks, um, to kind of help you get a better understanding of what the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership is and some of the work that we do, including some of the work that we've done, um, over the last couple of years here in Calitz County, which is not related to fish directly. Um, and I had a couple of other thoughts that I wrote down and I hope I'll be able to squeeze in. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Um, so to kick off, again, I'm Elaine Placido. I'm the executive director of the Lower Columbia Estuary Partnership. The Estuary Partnership is a bi-state national estuary program authorized by Congress. Um, and we're under the EPA as a non-regulatory program, working to protect and restore water quality and ecological integrity of the 28 national estuaries of significance, um, which includes Lower Columbia River Estuary. We work in the estuary, the lower 146 miles of the Columbia River, um, and the tightly influenced areas of its tributaries. So it's a pretty broad area that we work within in Oregon and Washington. Um, our work includes a wide swath of activities aimed at making the waters of the estuary more fishable and swimmable. Um, I wanted to add in a little point here before I talk about one of our, uh, recently, um, completed projects. Over the last 30 years, we're celebrating our 30th year this year. Um, we restored 35,000 acres, um, of floodplain along the lower Columbia. Um, and have, uh, worked with 100,000 students, mostly fourth and fifth graders. Um, so just picture those fourth and fifth graders as I go through this. Um, in 2023, we completed the largest floodplain reconnection project ever completed on the lower Columbia at Staggerwald Lake National Wildlife Refuge. Um, that 965 acre project was the culmination of nearly a decade of planning, permitting and design, and brought significant benefits from flood reduction to the port of Camas Washugle, the city of Washugle, and state, um, Highway 14, as well as habitat improvements and 1.5 miles of additional trails for recreation. We are currently working in a long range on a large, um, reconnection project on the East Fork Lewis River. Um, and that's underway right now. Um, if you reflect back to 1996, um, there was a big flood and the river evolves, uh, evolved into, um, some gravel pits that were there. Um, so we started some work with, uh, the state, um, Clark County, um, Storedalls Pit is right next door, um, working with them and several other, um, NGOs on, um, designing a project. And so that just kicked off about a month and a half ago. Closer to Calitz County, um, the last two years, we've worked with local schools to provide 18 hours of hands-on science education. Um, and on-water canoe trips at Silver Lake, which has been a huge hit, um, to 354 fourth and fifth grade students from Lexington, Wallace, Barnes, Carols, Rose Valley, and Northlake Elementary Schools, um, all at zero cost to the schools and school districts. Our work with the, uh, Spirit Lake Toodle Calitz River Collaborative mirrors, I anticipate, um, work that we completed, um, in far southwest Washington in the Baker Bay and Grace Bay's communities. The Bay to Bay project began with this, with stakeholder interviews. Essentially, we would go and meet with like the county commissioners and the conservation districts and, um, local, um, leaders and elected officials to kind of find out, you know, what concerns they had, what projects they had undertaken, um, and kind of what their vision for the future was, how they would measure success. Um, and also ask them who we should invite to public meetings. Um, we invited those people that, um, they recommended and we also opened it up to the entire community. Um, we held, uh, six meetings, three meetings, um, focused on each, um, Baker Bay and Grace Bay. Um, and had over 150 community members, um, participate very consistently. It was very surprising to have that many people show up. Um, we provided dinner, um, each night. It was amazing the amount of people that will come for pizza. Um, and we received really fantastic feedback. The meetings helped to identify community assets. Um, there are points of concern, like where there's flooding, you know, road issues, things like that. Um, and then, uh, identify community favored options to address increased flooding in the area. We work closely with Washington Seagrant and Pacific Conservation District to write a resilience plan based on the community input. And I'm happy to send that plan to you if you would like to see it. And from those community conversations, project proposals were completed. Several were funded and dredging in the area was included in the last Worda. Um, that was a really big deal. Um, dredging was one of the, the options that was fairly low on our list of, of potential actions that could be taken, but extremely high, like I, probably number one on every list from the, the community meetings. Um, dredging was incredibly important to the communities. Um, we had, uh, really good participation from the local, um, delegation, um, state and federal. And I think, um, having that participation and having community members in the room at the same time as, as decision makers, and very loudly saying they needed the dredging to happen, um, having it go into the very next, um, Worda authorization was, was really big. And I would definitely count that as a win.
Do you want to say what Worda?
Oh, it's the, uh, Water Resources Development Act. And so, um, the Corps of Engineers, if you've ever talked to anybody in the Corps of Engineers and asked them why they don't do something or, or, you know, how long it'll be until they do something, you, in, in, without fail, will get an explanation of, well, first it has to be authorized. So Congress has to authorize whatever the Corps of Engineers is going to do. And then it has to be appropriated. So the, the authorization comes and then the appropriation comes from, from Congress. So Worda is that authorization that then gets connected to an appropriation. Um, so nothing happens from the Corps of Engineers perspective until they have that, that golden pairing of the authorization and the appropriation. So we went from, you know, community meetings with pizza that were really fantastic, well-attended. We got lots of feedback to the very next Worda authorization that came up, that those areas being included. Um, I can't imagine, um, that it would have gotten, found its way into Worda so quickly without the right people being in the room at that time. Um, in the Bay to Bay projects, we were reminded that the problem area is that we, as experts, identify or the solutions that we may choose may not necessarily be in alignment with community members. So having an iterative process of community engagement is key to identifying challenges, solutions and opportunities that community, community members and leaders can support. Additionally, I would anticipate that as with the Bay to Bay project, we would have local, state and federal partners and elected leaders participating as well as providing important opportunities for learning and connection. Um, convening is one of the mandates of the National Estuary Program. And the Spirit Lake Toodle Calitz River Collaborative fits squarely into that box. I'm happy to answer any questions, um, that you may have about the work that we do, um, what our involvement is and any, any other questions you may have for me. Thank you.
If I could just quickly follow up, Elaine is on the, uh, she's one of the members of the Rivers Need Room work, work group. Um, and, um, and the Bay to Bay work that they did out in Awaco and Grace Bay community. Um, we're looking at that as a possible model for some community engagement. I think you said it really well, of just how important it is that we get those local voices, right? Both from, from leaders, local leaders, but also citizens who, just finding out what their concerns are and what priorities should be with flood, you know, with the, the fears about like flood risk, right? And, um, sedimentation, water quality, all that stuff. So.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well done.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next we have Alisa Holt with, uh, Mount St. Helens Institute.
Morning commissioners. Um, again, Alisa Hoyt with the Mount St. Helens Institute.
Again, Alisa Hoyt with the Mount St. Helens Institute. I'm a co-executive director there. We've been really lucky to have two-thirds of the commissioners up to our site in the last couple of years. Commissioner Rader, I'm really excited to get you up there. It was a beautiful morning this morning up on the mountain. We at Mount St. Helens Institute, our focus really is education. And we focus on education at Mount St. Helens, science education, especially for youth. We operate most of our youth education programs out of the Science and Learning Center at Coldwater, which is a former federal visitor center. We partner really closely with the U.S. Forest Service, too closely sometimes as they're operating their current visitor center out of our building, which has been an interesting opportunity for both of us to deepen our partnership. But the work that we do really is focused on connecting people to this amazing place that we have in a neighboring county, but really Calhoun County is the gateway to that. And so as part of our educational work, we really focus on that science education piece, but also connecting these students to their backyard. We serve some students from Calhoun County. We would like to serve more. Funding is a big issue of that. The Washington State has provided outdoor learning funding for schools for the last two years, and some schools use that funding to come up to our facility. Some went to other places, some didn't take advantage of that. But that funding was cut out of the state budget for the next biennium. So as an organization, we're looking for ways that we can continue to subsidize those educational experiences up at Mount St. Helens and bring students from Calhoun County up there. One way that the collaborative has been really helpful for us is to be able to provide this consortium of other agencies for us to work with, to bounce ideas off of, and to really disseminate educational information, as well as to be able to take it in so that we can talk to our volunteers and talk to the Forest Service. As you all know, federal agencies aren't always the best at listening. So having this really close relationship enables us to be able to help connect what we're hearing at the collaborative, what we're hearing from county residents, what we're hearing from leadership at the county, really reinforce that with the federal agencies. I'm really excited about the new, within the last month, Mount St. Helens National Volcanic Monument District Ranger, which is a mouthful. But he recently came here from Washington, DC. He's new to the area, but he had his pick of wherever he wanted to go in the United States, and he came here to work at Mount St. Helens. And he has spent his first month getting to know the place, getting to know the people within his own agency. And he's doing a really great job of listening. So I encourage you that if you have concerns, if you have things that you want to talk to the Forest Service about, Dusty, who's the new monument ranger, is a fantastic listener, and he's willing to hear from what you want to say. So again, back to collaborative. We've had opportunity for that educational piece, but it's also been a great opportunity for us to interact when it comes to tourism. We're not reliant on tourism for our education programs. We really want to reach out to schools. But we do offer guided programs, and we want to share this amazing place with people from around the region and from around the world. And so we've been engaged with conversations about tourism in the county for the last few years. As most of you are aware of, we're working on a capital development project up at our site that's on federal land. And so tourism has been a big part of that conversation. What does it mean to bring people into Calhoun County? What does it mean to try to revitalize that visitation that has been in decline for the last 20 years? What does it mean to have higher impact on this place that we really love? And we really love the quietness that is at Mount St. Helens. And the collaborative does a really good job of bringing all those different voices together so we can come up with solutions that try to address these conflicting interests. So it's been a great opportunity to be a part of this collaborative for a lot of different reasons. Any questions about what we do? I didn't really do a great job explaining what we do, but the collaborative has been a great part of just being able to network with the community and be that bridge between federal agencies and local folks.
Where is the new director's office at? You said he likes to listen.
He does like to listen. The office for the monument is in Amboy, so it's down in Clark County. He's spent probably two-thirds of his time out in the field, so out at the Windy Ridge site on the south side of Mount St. Helens at the office in Amboy, and then some days out at Coldwater in the Hummels area as well. But yeah, his office is in Amboy.
Thank you.
When did he arrive?
I think his birthday was June 22nd, maybe?
So he wasn't at the collaborative, right? That was someone from the?
The person that attended the collaborative workshop was the acting monument ranger, who was here temporarily on assignment from the gorge. So Dusty Vaughn is the new permanent ranger.
We had the Forest Service in, and I was trying to determine if he is here, but it was the temporary assignment. Yeah. Any idea? I know the Forest Service is working on three or four different solutions for Coldwater up there. And I think they gave us a date. I'm trying to recall, see some of that come out.
Yeah, you're talking about the Spirit Lake Outflow Project? My understanding is the environmental impact statement is coming out August 1st. Can you?
Early, yeah, early August. I had it on my calendar.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know that they're going to select a preferred alternative at that point. Again, you might know more than I do, but they're.
I haven't been very involved, but.
Yeah. To me, that one's always kind of the gorilla in the corner because if it failed up there, the results down here are dramatic. And, you know, it's been holding for 45 years, but you just never know with Mother Nature. And that's a big deal. So I'm interested in what Forest Service comes up with to do that. Whether any solution is going to be cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. So, you know, depending on even what they come up with the solution, when it will get implemented, who knows?
Yeah, I think that's been some sharp criticism of this whole process so far is that they're looking at all these different aspects, but there hasn't really been a price tag attached to it. And knowing that the Army Corps of Engineers manages the Spirit Lake Outflow, but that it's on Forest Service land and they're funding it, I think it's a piece of the puzzle that people are really concerned about.
It's kind of a different relationship. And it's all the work we've heard that Morgan does there, all the other stuff that gets done up there. If that system ever gave away, it's all for naught. It's all gone. So in hindsight, it amazes me that that wasn't a top priority, get that figured out a long time ago, but.
And again, coming back to the collaborative, I think that's one of the reasons that it fills a gap that's not present in any other way, where we have Army Corps coming, we have Forest Service coming, and we have folks from Calhoun County who can really champion the fact that you live here. You feel the effects of the sediment management that to them may just be on paper. It may just be a structure that they look at, and they're so narrowly focused that to hear your voices and the voices of the community is such an important venue that they may not take advantage of otherwise.
Yeah, I think to tag onto that, the value of having local government voices. I mean, Dave's there. I mean, you're really like the main local government representative that consistently comes to the collaborative, but making sure that those concerns about flood control, you know, sometimes the conversation moves to more like a restoration approach, ecological recovery, trying to do it in nature-based, which, you know, has its place. But we want to make sure that the concerns that you all have, that those are getting the recognition that they need, you know? Because that's really the point is hearing these different voices, not having one narrative be too dominant. So that's kind of what I see as value of, you know, for example, having, I know Dennis Weber used to come to the collaborative meetings for, you know, I don't know exactly what he thought of it, but he was there and willing to speak, so that had value.
Since I've been here, I take a trip once a year back to DC, and Army Corps is always on my list to sit down and chat with because to me, it's a, to me, it is the elephant in the corner. And if something happened, it's a big deal and want to make sure it's on their radar. Because they are slow to act unless, as she talked about, the Worda and different things, unless Congress tells Army Corps what they want them to do, they'll only do what they're told. That's pretty much the bottom line.
Yeah. And right now, we have a great opportunity. So the, and I'm not as familiar with the terminology, but that initial authorization for the work that the Army Corps did at what is now the monument, had a 50-year time horizon on it. So we're coming up to that 50-year horizon in 2030. They have to figure out what those next 50 years is going to look like. So having these opportunities for community voices where they're attending regularly to these meetings is really key to being able to provide input for what that next 50-year plan is going to look like.
And then the voices have to reach out, and we do reach out. We have our federal people reaching out all the time. That we want to see some adjustment in what the charge is to Army Corps, to be a little more proactive and more involved. Right now, it's just flood control. If your levies are doing, you're doing that. But when you go out and visually see it, and Dave knows this better than most, there's a lot more issues that need to be taken care of, they need to address. It's important that we kind of expand their scope because nothing really happens until Army Corps eventually signs off on it. They've been given such broad authority that they have to be brought along.
Perspectives of fear of flooding, fear of catastrophic events. How do we recover fish so that recreationalists are more likely to come to Calhoun County? How do we meet all of these needs? And the collaborative really is the ideal place for conversations like that to happen.
Yeah.
You know, I might be speaking out of ignorance here, but when I attended that collaborative workshop, one of the things that I noticed is that we were trying to work within the confines of the rules that have been set forth for 40 years, when the simple answer seems to be, we just need to get the rules changed so that we can fix the problem. Instead of everybody trying to meet what Congress wants and, you know, to fit into this box that they created 40 years ago, we need, we have enough information and enough data to say that what we've been doing for the last 40 years doesn't work. We need to change the confines of the rulebook and do what needs to be done, you know? The dredging part of it, the Corps of Engineers. That's what I would like to see the collaborative push for is we've been working on this set of what I would say failed rules and guidelines that the federal government has instituted. We need to push to change those so that we can work, so that we can really solve the problem. Because right now, I really feel like everything that I heard at that meeting and everything that I continue to read, it's like everybody's on a canoe oaring on the left side, and it's just going like this. And we just keep rehashing the same things over and over when, change the rules. Go to the people who can change the guidelines so that we can get stuff done. That's what I would like to see the collaborative really push for.
And I think they do need to be changed in a format that takes all those different perspectives into account, whether it's the needs of the county or, you know, fish recovery, again, for that recreation piece. But also, you know, the monument was created with certain things in mind, but the monument only goes so far, right? So because we only have power up to a certain point, it's really challenging to be able to meet all of those needs when we've got this big thing that was congressionally directed and is a really tough ship to turn.
Yeah. Well, I guess I want to say there's two things that stand out in my mind. I learned about erosion in middle school. Okay, Mother Nature says crap runs downhill. All that stuff that came out of Mount St. Helens is gonna, at least a major portion of it, is going to make it down the river stream. That's what built our beaches out here. We've got long beaches because we live on the Ring of Fire. Number two, I know from the history books, Mount St. Helens erupts on an average every 100 years. It went 130 years to the last eruption. If our timeframe with permissions are going to run out at the 50-year mark coming up in five years, the next 50 years is going to see Mount St. Helens erupt again, most likely. Just because it went 130 years doesn't mean it's going to go 100 years the next time. It might only go 75. I hope I don't live long enough to see it do it twice. But if that sediment dam up there failed right now, right now, nobody'd give a crap about what the fish are doing or about that sediment retention dam or a damn thing to do with what's going on up there. All of this time and money that we're spending right now would be for naught because it would destroy every damn effort that's been done in 40 years, which has not done anything to solve the problem. That Mother Nature says, hey, guess what? That stuff's going to go down the riverbed, whether you like it or not. And even if it's only 10% of what's up there, that's a hell of a problem.
Well, I think that's where, to Commissioner Rader's point of, yeah, it's like a paradigm shift is needed sort of up there. But getting the Corps to acknowledge that there's a lot of sediment still sitting up there in the floodplain that's been there. It was done as part of the emergency dredging measures, important work, but it's just been sitting there. And it, you know, Dave can tell you like the impacts it has. We saw it at the tour, right? It's piled up in floodplains, on banks. And so if we could get a little more attention to that, I call it legacy sediment, and getting that out of there, you know, that really solves, would help solve the problem of, because it's just been sitting there for 40-plus years. But that's a pretty massive undertaking, so.
I disagree. I would tell you it's not just sitting there. It is moving downstream, bits and pieces of it is not sitting anywhere.
Yeah. Well, there's still a lot that's, I mean, it goes.
Yeah, there's a hell of a source.
Getting, you know, pushed down river, and some of it's just still, it's far enough up on the floodplain. But, you know, you could do a lot of, it just, those floodplains could be doing much more important things.
Well, we've used for 60 minutes.
Wow.
As always, we appreciate you coming in. I think you guys started doing this, I think, in the first of the year, and you've been on quarterly basis. It's been real helpful this last time. You're generous enough, we let you move to Tuesday where we have a bigger crowd to ask some things and get your message out a little better. So we won't take any more of your time, we have some other stuff. But as always, we appreciate your time.
Yeah, appreciate the opportunity. Happy to be here. And if there's ever anyone, any agency or, you know, like Fish Recovery Board or anyone that you would think would be interesting to have, let us know, and we'll see if we can get them here.
You know, we had a, I would, what I would say to that is we had a gentleman in, Robert Sudar. And he talked about the salmon and the estuary, how, you know, it's really more than just Washington. I mean, it's a big area that affects that whole thing. And unfortunately, it was a Wednesday, and it was the three of us and Mr. Suter. And I think that would be a great thing to schedule and work again. I'm not necessarily saying him, but that kind of topic because you really started to understand where our salmon go and how that works. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we'll move right in to the next. I see a couple people, I'm not familiar with, so I'm assuming they are our guests. This one's, it's exciting to me. There's been a lot of talk around the community. We've known for a long time. We have, there's mental health issues. We don't have a lot of, we have a lot of resources, but we don't seem to. It struggles getting resources into state or to help people in longer terms type thing. And it's just a hot topic that we hear a lot about. And then we heard, we have a group that's buying a building and working at putting some services here. So I thought it'd be a natural, I haven't had the opportunity to talk to them. I want it to be fresh and open to everybody. So I might just turn it over, let you introduce yourselves and kind of tell us what you got going.
City Health, William Johnson, the CEO. My role is really real estate and finance within the organization. We have been fortunate enough to win several Department of Commerce grants to build facilities. Got our first one running in Lake Worthen out a little over two years, so kind of proving the concept. We have four others being built right now, showing ready, ready to finance. And then we have a few others like what we have here in Longview that are still in the design stages. We haven't had an agreement with the Healthcare Association or DSHS or what type of facility that they want. But generally, we're in what's called community behavioral health. It's a, tends to be a 10,000 square foot, six-room facility that would house 16 patients. And I brought a little rendering of what we propose here at the old Charlie Restaurant, 1826 First Avenue, next to the Hall of Justice. I think that's a great location. What we look for, other services for our residents, for our patients. What we look for, other, other services, uh, for our residents, for our patients, um, and, and. Uh, looks like that's gonna be a good place to have a facility.
I'm, I'm Claudia Johnson and I'm, I'm basically the operations side of, of, of facilities and operation behavioral health clinic. And, uh, um, I have an Emerald City Behavioral Health. And Emerald City Health Services and Emerald City. In that's a behavioral treatment facility. And, uh, um. Um, we're interested in, um, joint partnerships. I would be the operator. And, uh, on Destiny here would be the developer side of, of things. And we think there's great potential here, um, just because you're. You know, not too far, not, not too far away from Vancouver, not from, from Tacoma, Seattle. Um, for other things to happen. I definitely think that the Western State Hospital, Eastern State Hospital is a very, very broken system. They were, they were basically mandated in twenty seventeen to, uh. Place up all their civil commitments into the community. And what they've done instead is they went to open Maple Lane and, uh, they went to open, um. Yes, well, it used to be fascinated, it's now heritage, all the big heritage. And they're transferring them out instead of putting them out in the community. So apparently they're not doing a good job of doing that. I think DSHS and HCA are very highly interested in, in somebody actually opening a hospital. Where, where they can help, um, um, all those people that are supposed to be discharging from Western State Hospital or Eastern State Hospital. They're not going anywhere. And I, I think, I think this place is a great opportunity for some of the project.
Oh, uh, make sure the green lights that your mics are on, I guess, audience, it is okay.
I think it would be a great opportunity and a great place to, to be building a big hospital. And I, I'm certain it would be a, a, a project in collaboration with DSHS and HCA. Because they would love it if they could move all those people from Eastern State to Western State Hospital. Elsewhere in, 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 in a, maybe privately owned or immunity owned or whatever. Type facility, they've been mandated to do that. Twenty seventeen and still haven't done it. And instead they became with lawsuits. I mean, obviously first, first, first thing around was a true blood lawsuit. And, and the state heard a lot because of it, but then all the incentive programs came about and because of it. And then last year, DSHS, because of the Eastern State and Western State Hospital. Got paid with a hundred million dollar fine for, for not being compliant with, with the, uh. True blood lawsuit. Meaning they're not moving people fast enough out of, out of places to, uh, civil commitment centers and. And forensics basically to evaluate whether they're competent to stand trial or to, to. Establish competency so they can stand trial, so, um. I think they're, the, the state is looking for a solution to, so I would be working with them and would be working if you, if you do something like that.
Yeah, I don't know that your mics are on. Push the green, the black pad.
Your green light on? Okay.
Oh, okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
What, what would be your idea of a big facility? What does big mean? How many patients?
Like two, three hundred beds.
Okay.
And is this something, the, the one that you guys are currently doing at Charlie's? It, it's a private enterprise. You said you, you secured grants through the state or the federal government?
A state, the state, uh, the state, uh, the, the fines that were imposed because of true blood lawsuit. And also for noncom- the hundred million dollars because of noncompliance, they're, they're, they're supposed to go towards fixing, fixing the problems. So they would be, um. Department of Commerce grants, um, there'd be like county grants and there'd be all sorts of different grants that could be applied towards, towards such projects. I think it's a matter of just proposing it and, and working with, with, uh. HCA and DSHS and, and, and basically the governor's office. The governor would, would love such a project. Just because DSHS is, and, and the Eastern State and Western State Hospital is costing them a lot of money.
In the case of the Charlie's location, we took the property, um. Under contract and applied for a grant. And in that process, we're explaining to the owners what we intend to do and whatnot. We didn't get that grant. Um, but the owners. Uh, are excited enough about what our plans are that they're gonna stay in the deal and we think we can build it without a grant. Um, we're, we're, we're designing it anyways, uh, and then if more Department of Commerce grants come up, we'll apply for it.
Right.
So currently there's, the, the government has mandated. The, as you said, you know, to, to have these people go out into the. That responsibility's been placed on the, the, the cities, the cities and the, in the counties throughout.
Right, that.
Because of the lawsuit.
The, the state basically mandated that they move this civil commitment out of the, um, Western State Hospital into the community. And so I don't know if you know the, the political backdrop, uh, as far as the Western State and Eastern State. Um, basically the state had to pay for the care of, um. Five hundred some patients in, in the Western State Hospital and Eastern State Hospital. And the reason for that was that the buildings were so old. They could not passing inspections and, um, they could not get CMS and the Joint Commission accreditation. So if you don't have that, Medicaid won't pay for, for, for the care of the patients. So the state has, so additionally, they had to pay for that. The, the state is still paying something like a million dollars a day in fines for not affording in inmates. Um, forensic evaluations in, in a timely manner. So the state is really desperate in fixing that problem, but. So to fix that problem, basically they said, well, let's move the civil commitments out of. Out of the Western and Eastern State Hospital and put them in the community so we can make more room for forensics evaluations. Which are all the people in jails who are supposed to get a forensic evaluation within fourteen days. And obviously they're not getting that and hence, hence the fines that, that we're paying every day in. Million dollars a day, something like that. And so, um. I think, I think the state is looking for a solution to, to move out the civil commitments in, in a, in a bigger. More impactful way than, than the sixteen bed facilities. I, I think a two to three hundred bed. Or even maybe even more would, would, um, probably fix that problem they're having.
So with them transferring that responsibility to the counties and to the cities. There are programs that are there that are supposed to be doing what you're saying.
There's right now a hundred million dollars there from the, from last year's fine.
Yeah, and, and there, those programs are. Attempting to do what they're required to do.
Right.
Through, you know, through the, what the healthcare authority says that they're supposed to do. How, how is what you guys? How, how is what you're gonna do, be doing? How is it gonna be different than? Because right now the state's sending more unfunded mandates to those organizations, cutting funds, cutting people. Um, and still requiring the exact same output that they have, for that they're getting fined for right now and not complying with it. So how is what you guys are gonna be doing different than what's already in place with, with the state right now?
It would be doing it at a much, much larger scale, cause, cause as of right now, they're basically doing sixteen beds. Many, many sixteen beds across, across the board, but what they need is, is basically something big. Uh, that, that actually Medicaid paid. I mean, obviously, as you know, Western State Hospital. Um, is building a forensic center who, that's probably three years out. But that's just replacing what they have and it's not opening more civil commitments, yet they still have. At least three hundred fifty commitments just at Western State Hospital that need to be moved out, but there is no place to send them. So, um. The money is there. It's, it doesn't come from Medicaid. The funding for, 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 for. A place like this would come from that a hundred million dollar fine that the state, state had to pay and has to now use. Towards fixing the problem. That's what they did with a true blood lawsuit. There was the. A hundred seventy-five million dollars that. Basically. They had to use to build all those facilities and build the infra- infrastructure that goes with it.
But the funding that they're giving to the true blood is minimal to, to keep up with what's going on. So are you guys looking? I know you're doing the Charlie's thing, but are you also interested in like trying to find a piece of land to put this type of a?
Right, correct.
Always, all over the state.
The right place, yes.
The sixteen bed is really just a, a drop in the bucket, but that's what they're funding and, and it's easy.
Yeah.
The bigger projects are.
That's, that's where the sixteen beds come from. The state says we'll fund sixteen beds.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, and the reason they're doing the sixteen beds is because they're Medicaid paid versus state paid. But a hospital is Medicaid paid for as long as is, is accredited as, as, as far as. Um, CMS and Joint Commission accredited, then Medicaid would pay. But the reason. The state has to pay for the patients in, um. Eastern State and Western State Hospital is because they don't have the accreditation because the buildings are too old and they're condemned.
Do you think there's some way to access that hundred million dollar fine and use it to build a three hundred bed unit?
Right, right. I think so, yes. I think it's in collaboration definitely with, with, uh, the governor's office, with healthcare authority. And, um, um, and CMS and, um. Get it basically done that way. It's, it's a joint, joint team effort.
What I, what the beauty in what you're talking about is currently the way that the system is set up, they just, they just. Mandated that counties get together to come up with a program to do it.
Right.
So it's a, it's a piecemeal, um, at best.
Right.
Organization where you have different service providers, all providing similar services but different. And they have to go all over the place to get them.
Right.
And they're going everywhere to meet these people. And what we're, what you guys are talking about, which we have had this conversation to discuss before, is. This is where they're going and they're gonna get everything that they need at this place.
Right.
That's the beauty. I really like that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. That's, that's exactly what we're talking about.
Because right now we're funding and double funding. I mean, the way that it's set up now, we have organizations that we give money to through one funding source. And those organizations are in competition with the same, with other service providers within our own county that we're funding. And they're competing against the same money, but they're providing the same services.
Right.
Through the same organization and it's, I don't quite understand why it's that way, but. The, the, the resolution that I see is what you guys are talking about doing, and that is. Eliminating that and just having a one stop shop where they get everything that they need in one location.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly. So that's kind of, and of course there'd be not just a, um. Civil commitment, basically the ninety to a hundred twenty day evaluation, but then there, there, there would be stepped down to go from there. And then there would be outpatient, um, behavioral health for counseling. And then there would be, um. A lot of, um, social work as far as finding them a place somewhere in the state or sending them back home where they came from. Once, once they're rehabbed. So there's, there's, there's all of that.
Creating an agency to do this? Is that what it's gonna be as an agency?
It's, yes, we're, we're thinking about doing that, but doing it in, in collaboration with, with the governor's office and HCA. Yeah.
The other beautiful thing about what you're talking about is we have programs that are funded through taxes right now.
Right.
That we can't bill for. And if you guys create something like that and you're an agency, you can actually build the insurance company.
Right.
Create the revenue and we don't have to have taxpayers.
We already, we already have the agency, let's put it that way. We already have a behavioral health agency that, that, that. That's already credentialed and it's already doing outpatient behavioral health clinic, but it can do anything.
Yeah, that could actually fund drug court because drug court can bill. Because it's make it ma- make, make drug court mandatory as part of the rehab process.
Right.
Yeah, and you can bill for that.
Right.
That's, that's the direction I really want, would like to go.
Right.
So. I'm getting excited sitting here because I deal with this through the Gerbo all the time and, and this is.
This, this would bring a lot of jobs to the community. It would bring, it would just totally revamp the whole area. And it's all healthcare jobs and healthcare jobs are, are highly, highly paid jobs. I mean, you know, the minimum, the minimum I, I would pay somebody would be like twenty-seven dollars an hour.
Yeah.
And, and of course, when, when you get into the nursing and, and you get into the counselors and the social workers. Those people make over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
So.
When you're talking about a facility like this, do you have an idea what the footprint is? I mean, are you?
Oh, it would be huge.
I mean, are you five acres, ten acres, what do you?
Maybe more, more.
Maybe more. Hundred and twenty thousand square feet.
More than five acres because you need the parking for the employees and, and. And then you probably need other structures like maybe HR or whatever.
Will you also have outpatient services as part of the program?
Yes, yes.
Which is a revenue generate, that's a.
It is, yes.
There.
Right. So that's, that's kind of like what we're thinking about. I'd be more than happy, happy to run it under Emerald City Behavioral Health.
And while you're doing these sixteen bed units, you're, you're constantly looking for a spot for this? Is that what you're?
Right, but I'm, I'm also working on two one hundred beds, uh, youth facilities also. But, but those, those, those can only be an, an exception to, um, IMD laws. So, um, there can only be two of them per state and I'm, I'm, I'm taking both of those exceptions. But, um, altogether, um. I think this project is much, much needed, a lot more needed than anything else in the state, just because the, the. DSHS has been proven incapable of running, um, the, the state hospitals, basically. I mean, hence the, the hundred million dollar fines last year. So I think it would be an awesome place and it would be great. This town will grow with great income, that is.
Interesting, very interesting. Lauren, Lauren, do you have a question? Sure.
Isn't sure when to come up. Um, so do you? We obviously have a need for a mental health facility in the, in the county. You talked about though, your focus being transfers from Eastern State and Western State. That's those, that's the population you've talked about. Do you have a plan for serving Calhoun County versus bringing in people from? Other counties and other areas?
Also, also the outpatient behavioral health and other, other types of faci- facilities that, that will do like, uh. And services will provide like substance use disorder and, and recovery, um, for SUD. And outpatient behavioral health clinic and all of that would come with it.
Okay, so the si- the sixteen beds though, would that, in my mind, I see that filling up really quickly, but transfers from Washington. From Western State and Eastern State.
Right.
What is? Given that that's your first step that you're looking at, is there going to be room for Calhoun County residents to use those sixteen beds? Or are they gonna kind of?
Yes.
Is there a lineup and, and it's just gonna be filled with the?
The sixteen bed facilities are specifically designed to support your community.
Right.
There, uh, if, if there is somebody from Washington, uh, uh, Western State Hospital who's gonna be, um. Let out from Calhoun County, that's the first place they're gonna go.
But we'll also have an outpatient behavioral health clinic that, that, that does recovery. And we could, we, 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 we also plan on doing rehab places. Like, like for, 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 for drug rehabilitation, basically.
So, and that would be, because in my, in my mind.
That would be an additional, that would be an additional sixteen bed.
That hospital will have its own community based services inside it. So it'll have a wing of sixteen rooms, which would be crisis stabilization, which is specifically gonna be people from this community.
From the community and not, not the.
Other sixteen beds of evaluation and treatment.
Right.
Okay, but at Charlie, at Charlie, just my memory of the Charlie's building, there's probably not room for more than just sixteen, a sixteen bed facility at that. Particular facility.
But, but that's gonna be there, but we're, we're thinking about building this, this hospital campus with, with all those other buildings on it. That, that, that community can go to and an outpatient clinic and then the hospital.
Yes, yes. I realize that's, yeah, that's, and just.
It'd be a whole project.
In thinking about that, have you guys looked at the old, you know, the, there's a hospital for sale here in town? I don't know.
I didn't.
I don't know. It's, it's old Monticello Medical. I don't, it's under Saint John's now, is it? I don't know who owns it now. Peace Health. It's on like Broadway and.
It's at the end of Broadway.
The old Calhoun General Hospital.
Yeah, it used to be Calhoun General years ago.
So definitely we can have a look. A- 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 as you know, in order to get CMS and, and Joint Commission accreditation, it has to be up to code. And we'd have to consider whether it's worth rehabbing an old hospital or is it better to, to build ground up? Because obviously Western State Hospital, Eastern State Hospital, their, their buildings are so old.
Yeah.
With all the patch up work they've done, they're, they're still not getting the accreditation and the state has to pay for the care of the patients.
Yeah, so the initial, okay, so you're looking at the initial sixteen bed that
That's just, that's just a totally separate addition.
No, I get I get they're two separate projects. I'm just thinking that the larger project is probably a little ways down the road. And do we have the, like, is Calhoun County kind of your goal to do it here right now or is are we just kind of one?
I think it's a, it's a great place.
I think it's a great place too, but but isn't your goal?
Yes.
This is the longest conversation we've had on this idea. So I talked to Kelly a week ago, so
Right.
that's how far along we
I get, I get it.
What I'm envisioning is a campus, a behavioral health campus. And the the smaller buildings obviously would be built faster than than the main hospital. Now, if there's a hospital already, I would have our civil engineers and and our architects look at it. And basically tell us, hey, is this a good, good enough, feasible enough for future? And is there enough room to build all this other supporting buildings and facilities around it?
Yes.
And is there enough parking on it for for all of this things that we want to do? Because we want to do a crisis stabilization, we want to do an evaluation and treatment center. And we want to do a rehab place and an outpatient behavioral health clinic and all of it. And and then behind it have the hospital, obviously, the hospital will be a lockdown hospital.
Right, right.
Because all the hospitals, behavioral health hospitals are. But it would basically be taking taking it from the hands of DSHS and putting putting it in in the hands of the community. Or whoever, however, it's going to be owned, different owners. Or maybe even you guys want to own part of it. I don't know how we're gonna end up doing it.
Right.
But but it would work out in that they'll provide comprehensive services to everyone.
I I love the idea. It's certainly a need here. I guess my ask would be is if it starts with the sixteen bed, that that sixteen bed does include community and not just not just transfers in from elsewhere. But take a look at the hospital, it probably needs a lot of love though. I'm I'm, it may not, it may not pass muster.
I definitely, it's like I would, I would go in there with with an architect and civil engineer team.
You would need to.
For any valuation.
With some janitors too.
We need to spend some time evaluating and looking at drawings and all of that.
It's what, it's what, like a six or seven story building?
Yeah, we actually
Is it empty?
We've been there. I took our
I believe it's empty.
Our public works there, walked through that hospital. Because we were talking, we're having the same idea that you guys are having, getting away from the current system and program and trying to find a location to do what you're talking about doing. And their assessment was it's better to start from the ground up.
Oh, wow. Right, right, that's 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 kind of like, I I see that this is what happened at Western State Hospital, even though the state put so much money in those old buildings. They're still not up to par.
But I would I would recommend you go look at it. The campus itself is great. And I even I even thought about having a conversation with Peace Health with regards to
We could, we could, let's put it this way, the hospital, if if it doesn't pass as a hospital, we can use it to do like on one floor, do do maybe the crisis stabilization
That's something, yeah.
on another floor, do an evaluation and treatment center. That way it would reduce the footprint of of the new hospital.
Yeah.
So make the project cheaper, but 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 we could definitely use, I don't know how many, how many rooms in every, on every floor there are, but
Eighty eight thousand square feet.
Okay, so so definitely it's like each floor can can be used for, we 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 could do like a long term play. So we could do a crisis stabilization, we could do evaluation and treatment, we could do different and and we could do rehab, drug rehab on another floor. So you could use that current, we could use that current hospital to do all of that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. We'll definitely check it out.
Yeah.
The thing too that that is that goes unseen is how far reaching the impact of the insufficiency of that program is. And I'll give you an example. Currently, when we take somebody into the jail, if they are evaluated and they're evaluated, if they have mental health issues, they have to stay in a cell by themselves.
Right.
So that that creates capacity issues for us in our jail because we have to, you know, single cell every one of those inmates that has that. So something like this, they don't have to go to the jail, they can go right over to the facility.
Exactly, exactly. They they go right into the crisis stabilization.
Yep.
Right? And then from there, they get moved on to wherever they need to go next. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, hello, question, Mr. President. Thank you for coming. I wasn't aware this was going on and I'm very impressed.
Okay.
The presentation is very precise. You obviously know the structures, the funding, the regulations. And it's a very complex issue and I appreciate it. I was in healthcare for thirty five years and dealt with the mentally ill quite often. I've been pushing for some kind of facility locally because we are very underserved here. Our jails are full of people that are mentally ill, our streets are full of people mentally ill and very underserved, a lot of addiction and a lot of lack of services. And I didn't know you were doing this. I really appreciate you coming forward and doing this project. It sounds like exactly what my dream would be, a large facility that will actually encapsulate the problem and not just kick it down the road, shuffle it away. And also the Trump administration is very big on rehab and these sorts of projects. And they would tap money, I would, HHS would definitely offer money.
Well, I think the whole movement across the country, and it's bipartisan movement, movement basically towards treatment, not incarceration.
Right.
And it's a right, right thing to do. I mean, you you go to the hospital with a heart attack, you need treatment. I mean, mental health versus medical health, it's still needs care, healthcare, not not incarceration. Right.
And that would be their policy, would be they want to get people fixed, not just punished.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So I really appreciate this. This is very exciting for me.
Glad you like it.
I've been pushing for this for a long time.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know if you people are a miracle or what.
Oh, thank you.
On, well, not so fast. We got a veteran first. On June seven, June seventeenth, we presented, an organization that I'm part of, presented to the county commissioners a plan on behavioral health in Calhoun County. And I'm going to give you a copy because it's public record. But we have basically charged, if you want to call it that, these gentlemen up here with the mandate of coming up with a solution to behavioral health in Calhoun County. And I didn't hear you say anything in your remarks that is any different than part of what we put together in our paper. And a big part of our recommendations came from the experience of this gentleman right here that just spoke. So there is a group of people in Calhoun County that are a hundred percent behind, you know, getting this kind of a program going. And I can't, the first word out of everybody's mouth when you talk about this is where's the money gonna come from? And I keep telling people, forget about the money, let's figure out what the problem is and then we'll figure out how to get the money. Well, here it is.
Yeah, that that is the plan. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
If you wanted.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So that's kind of what the plan, any questions?
Hi, thank you for coming. My name is Gina James. I'm with Calhoun County Health and Human Services. I just had a couple of questions and maybe a couple of comments. And thank you for being here. The sixteen smaller bed facility that you talked about, I heard you say that they would want it to be focused on Calhoun residents coming out of Western State Hospital or Eastern State Hospital. Would there also be the ability for folks to go, you know, for Calhoun County residents to be placed straight in there? Or would it only be for individuals transitioning out of Western or Eastern State Hospital?
The, the, it's it's a matter of how how the state pays for the care of the clients. They need to be referred to to MCOs.
Yeah.
And so they can't just come here and and they they could talk to social workers and say, this is where I want to go. And they would get, they would get what they want. And usually, people get what they want. If they say, hey, I'm from here and this is where I want to be, that that's what, they get first priority anyways. Because home is home and and every social worker knows that people want to be home.
Yeah, there's people from Calhoun County that are in Western State Hospital right now.
Right.
And if we, depending on the type of facility that we're encouraged to put up. If it was a long term stay situation and they're being discharged from Western State Hospital and they're from Calhoun County, this is where they'd go.
Right.
Be closer to their family that way.
Okay, and that would be the focus of this sixteen bed facility is taking in those individuals transitioning back, okay?
That that's, that's why all these facilities are usually placed throughout the state. They're not all congregated in one place. The six, there is, along the I five corridor, there's, there's Everett. There is, there is Marysville, there is Tacoma, there is Lakewood, there is Vancouver. There's nothing here.
Yeah.
So that's why I think something needs to be here.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
And then talking about sort of this bigger idea or one stop shop kind of concept. I just want to clarify, I think for my own understanding and maybe others as well. As we're having conversation about duplication of services and multiple behavioral health agencies providing the same service. I just want to kind of make sure I have the best understanding, the funding for most of these services, Medicaid. So the funding comes from the healthcare authority. They contract with managed care organizations, managed care organizations contract with behavioral health agencies. So you would have individual contracts with the managed care
Yes.
organizations, the same way our other behavioral health agencies do.
Correct.
So
But we provide a different service, different, different services than than you your other behavioral health agencies do.
Yeah.
Like our, for example, our Emerald City Behavioral Health does does intensive residential treatment. And what they do is they go into other facilities and provide DSHS licensed facilities and provide services. Of course, you don't have any DSHS owned facilities around here except for the care homes. But we we also do outpatient behavioral health as far as providing counseling for SUD and counseling for family or for children and families or whatever, whatever else there needs to be. But the same agency can can also be running a stabilization crisis center and 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 evaluation and treatment center. And it could be running a rehab house. It could be doing a lot of different things.
Yeah, I see, yeah, I see that.
I can also see that it could also do a hospital. Of course, the hospital will have to be in collaboration with 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 the state and and be actually making it possible for the state to move those civil commitments out of Western State Hospital. And of course, you know, they're they're there. And the reason, I mean, the reason they paid fine is because they were not moving the people out. Okay, so so we'll be here to be moving the people out or we're gonna get fined the same way the state was fined. So the the point is to actually do something, you know, to integrate them and and move them on and 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 make great programs that help everyone, that actually make a difference.
Yeah, yeah, and I think we'd certainly appreciate the conversation about bringing those types of services into our community that we don't have now.
Right.
That would be great. And then having the option for those individuals to transition, right, to outpatient services with your facility. We also have, you know, other agencies that do outpatient services as well. But to have them kind of in in house or, you know, for a smooth transition, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think you've mentioned that you are doing this or have already done this somewhere else.
Right.
The biggest challenge that I see is all of the vested interest that are already involved in this one way or another. One, we're, we're a problem, we're a county of Band-Aids and I'm sure the whole country is a county of Band-Aidville. So when you, when you come into a community like this and you know that you you're going to face all this opposition because you're going to be upsetting a lot of apple carts, what is the best way to deal with that? To get everybody in the county on the on the same page and heading in the same direction?
As as working collaboration with everyone, is basically getting everyone to the table and 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 presenting them the plan and showing them how it's gonna work and why it's gonna work. And what a difference it will make to the community, because that's where it's at. It's like, it's like, oh, are we gonna have more tax money here? Really? Or or how how is our community gonna look different than than it's looking now? And and and, yeah, it's like, yeah, we'll solve the drug drug problem because I know there's a big drug problem. And and we'll solve, solve a lot of other economic kind of problems. And and present it from from a way that everybody can understand and everybody wants it. Because, right, it's like, while while you y'all support behavioral health, the people are always not in my backyard.
Yep.
Not in my backyard.
Every project we've permitted, we've had to deal with the not in my backyard. But I feel like when what you guys are seeing here is that we're at a tipping point now.
Yeah.
Right.
It's in your backyard anyways.
Right.
Well, I remember, I remember the not in your backyard because about twenty years ago, they tried to put a prison there.
Yeah.
And I don't remember where the where the room was, but there's three or four hundred people against it. And I was the only one that said, hey, maybe we ought to consider this.
Yeah.
Well, the thing is, is they're all locked up, so what what's the problem?
Yeah. It's it's Better to have them in a nice facility where they're, you know.
Absolutely.
All the jobs, all the jobs that that was gonna bring in and all the money the the county would have had because of that. And it's not like those, those people are gonna hurt the community actually to like
But you say your problem is you're dealing with logic and we're dealing, we're gonna have to deal with the emotions of all the other people involved.
The the most important part of this is making sure that we are in the right, in the right zoning. Because it doesn't matter what they say, if we're in the right zoning, that will allow and permit that that kind of project, then then there is nothing they could do. So I mean, if it's not in the right project, maybe we work on zoning changes first.
Yep.
But once, once, I I know that, like, if any of the sixteen bed facilities have to apply for a conditional use permit, it's really tough. It's really tough for them. But like, if if they're in the rightfully zoned piece of land, then there is nothing, the community, they can, they can object all they want, there's, there's nothing they could do about it. So it's also about finding the property that that's that's zoned out right for that kind of project.
It's my understanding that your first step would be the sixteen facility of the Charlie's property.
Right, and and then looking at, well, actually, I really like the idea of the hospital. I didn't know you guys have a hospital because a hospital is really good at using every floor for a different thing.
And there's quite, I believe there's quite a bit of property with that, with that parcel. I don't, I don't know, Steve, maybe you know how many acres there are.
How many what?
How many acres are with Memorial Hospital?
I don't remember. I don't, I don't think they told us that, Gina, do you remember at all what they told us? How how many acres it is? It's a big campus.
We'll take a look at it.
We'll, we'll take a look at it, but I think that would be the probably one of the fastest ways to go about opening services right away. Because it's there and it already has the rooms and bathrooms in it. It might need some, some really updating, some updating to to pass inspections. But to for for a behavioral health hospital as a one, there is a lot more to it.
Oh, yeah.
Like Western State Hospital, if you go and tour it, you'll see that it's like, I, I don't get it. What is wrong with this? It looks perfectly okay to me. No, it's structurally not passing the inspection.
Would you, are you intending to use the existing Charlie's building or do you tear that down and start over?
Yeah, we're tearing it down.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's a rendering if anybody cares.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I think this is very exciting and I, I'm looking forward to everybody working on this together because this is what we need.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The one thing that I really intrigues me about the approach that you guys are taking is you actually have billable services to insurance companies.
Right.
Not, so it's not on the backs of the taxpayers.
Right.
Right.
It's something that could be self sustained and we don't have to charge taxes to fund it.
No, 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 it's all Medicaid paid and and if 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 it's done the right way, of course, the hospital is is it has to actually pass all the Joint Commission and all the CMS inspections. As far as the, using the hospital for for all these other services, it's not a scrutinizing of an inspection. And it's basically um, it's not a scrutinizing of an inspection and it's basically inspection floor by floor. So, uh, i- rather than the whole hospital as one, so, um, that's something that's very, who owns a hospital?
It's Peace Health.
Peace Health, okay. And they're just not doing anything with it?
They, they, on the third floor, I believe they're doing, uh, what's the liver stuff called?
Dialysis.
Well, we could probably, we could probably lease the rest of the floors.
Well, they're, they're selling the whole thing.
They're selling it?
They're selling it.
I like that.
Selling the whole thing.
Okay. Huh? How much? Okay.
It's pretty reasonable.
Oh, there you go.
Good.
Okay, that sounds to be reasonable.
This is the Min City, by the way, if you go back and look at the history, and that is one of the iconic buildings that was built.
How long ago?
Nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty-five.
So, so my, my first, my first, as far as that hospital, my first, my first thing would be to actually, um, get, get civil engineering and, and architect and to make sure that we're, we're gonna be able to actually use it for, for the intended pur- purposes. But for, for the civil commitment hospital, I think we need a, a brand new hospital. And that would be a big project. It'd be two, three years out, maybe even more. But it would be worthwhile and would do it in collaboration, definitely with, with the governor's office and, um, HCA and DSHS and Department of Health, everyone involved in that one. Yeah, them too. Yeah. So, yeah, definitely, definitely, definitely look at a hospital.
Anything else, Bill? Bill?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm a person of faith and I thought if we brought it forward, something would happen. And this is very promising. And when people say, not in my backyard, tell them it's already on your porch and in your front yard and in your garage. What do you want?
Right, right, exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
We, we, we've got ways, uh, uh, working around that.
Well, we appreciate you taking some time today. I think, uh, w- within our power, when you look at the three of us up here, we would, uh, help you with anything that's within what we can, we can do. I don't think I'm speaking out of turn there. That, so, so, uh, as you heard, feel free to keep us in the loop and, and ask us if we, if we can provide whatever it is you need, we will certainly try and do that.
Thank you so much. We'll, we'll definitely be keeping you in the loop and, and make sure that you're informed of everything we're doing and, um, we're, we're, we'll start the process with, with looking at the hospital and looking for something probably close by to the hospital for, for a big lot, for, for the next civil commitment center. That's, that's like three hundred plus beds.
Okay.
So, that's, and, and of course, we, we, we'd, we'd do that in, in conversation with, with the governor's office and everybody else.
You know, state has to be involved in everything for sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Well, we, we, we'd also wanna get money for the project.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order today? It's been a long day. Appreciate everybody's participation. Uh, we will adjourn. Thank you.